My name's Mike Blake. I'm one of your Iron County Commissioners. Part of my responsibility is in the Iron County Commission is to work with Sheriff Carpenter here in, in the arena of public safety. We're here today to, to talk a little bit about the upcoming project of building a new Iron County Jail. Along with that, with the jail project, unfortunately comes the need for a general obligation bond, which we're going to ask the taxpayers to support, the voters to support this coming November. Let me just give you a brief history of this project. This project's actually been in the works for about seven years in earnest. We've spent a lot of time over the last several years looking for a place, trying to find the best fit in our community for such a facility. We've gone through several different iterations of placement of the jail and have finally come to a place that I think is, is the best for the community. It's best for the county. It's a really good spot. It's located just off of Airport Road, kind of behind IFA and the Horse Alley area. We've got about 30 acres that we've acquired in that neighborhood. The, the footprint of the jail will take approximately 15 to 17 acres for what we're going to build initially. This is something that we've been working on for a long time. One of the cool things about this whole process is in 2016, about the time that I came into office, our auditor at the time, Dan Jesson, really looked at our finances, looked at the need for a new jail and decided that we could afford to start putting away money. And we did at that point because we knew this would be an expensive endeavor and we didn't want the, the full responsibility of this project to rest solely on the, on the backs of the taxpayers in the form of a bond. Over the next several years, we were able to put away about $20 million. The cost of the property, the engineering, the initial architect work, those type of things have all come out of that money. So we haven't dipped into any funds that would be required to be paid back through the issuance of a bond. Our jail, it's reached the end of its lifespan and unfortunately just needs to be replaced. My history and my background here in Iron County is in law enforcement. I've been a, a law enforcement officer here in Iron County for the past almost 28 years. I've worked with the Iron County Sheriff's Office. The majority of my career was spent with the Cedar City Police Department and I've been with the Enix City Police Department for the last little while. So I'm really aware of the condition of the jail and watched it kind of deteriorate before our eyes over the past several years. We come to you today to talk about kind of the, not only the need for the jail, but kind of how the bonding process works. We started this process with the idea of truth and taxation. That wasn't popular. It's, it's not popular with me either. Believe me, this is the last thing that I would want to be doing is sitting here today in front of this camera, talking about the need to raise taxes and the need for a bond. We decided to go in the direction of a general obligation bond, which actually does a couple of things. Number one, it puts the, the power in the hands of the voters. You get to choose whether this bond happens or not, whether it's approved or not. By going with the, with the bond, with the bond option, we've actually, we're able to get better terms as far as a lower interest rate, the ability to pay that debt off early. And it's going to be less of an impact to the Iron County taxpayer. The average home in Iron County, which is silly, is about $405,000. The impact to the average taxpayer, to the average property owner of $405,000 is about $153 per year, or about $12 and change per month. That's the highest that, that, that payment could be. It could vary a little, but that payment over the next term of the bond is 30 years, will never go above $153 and some change per month. With shifting tax rates and things like that, it may go down a little bit. There'll be a little bit of a variable. We're committed as the commission to do this as responsibly and with, with the least burden to the taxpayer as possible. Part of the deal with the general obligation bond is the fact that there's a couple of different things. If interest rates fluctuate, if interest rates go down, we can refinance, get a lower interest rate and lower those, lower those payments to the taxpayer. We also have the option to pay the bond off early. Now, in Iron County, we've never asked for a general obligation bond before. We have never built or had any sort of project that would even come close to the size and proportion of building a new jail. And honestly, moving forward in the future, I can't see a, a circumstance where we would ever ask for another bond of this magnitude because we're not in the, we're not in the business of, of building a lot of buildings. You know, this jail is really going to be the biggest project in the foreseeable future for Iron County. When the bond is paid off, that amount drops off. It's no longer, it's, it's not something that carries forward such as a regular tax increase. So this is something that as soon as we can pay it off, we plan to do so. And there's a couple of different strategies for that. Sheriff Carpenter's going to talk a lot more about that in a minute. I want to address just a couple of really common questions that we've gotten in the community. As far as the property that the current jail sits on, as soon as we're able to vacate that property, we're going to sell it. We're going to figure out what the configuration of that property looks like to get the best bang for the buck for Iron County. And the proceeds from that property will go directly into paying off the bond on the new property. There's been a question about a consumption tax or a, you know, something that doesn't necessarily rest the totality of that bond on the shoulders of property owners. That's something that the county doesn't necessarily have control of. That's a Utah State legislative issue and we've actually taken that up with the legislature and Representative Ship is going to run a bill this year that would give us the ability to do that. That's not going to be something that, that will generate enough revenue to replace the need for a bond, but it's definitely something moving forward that if passes, can help mitigate some of the cost of that bond. Let's turn the time over to Sheriff Carpenter.
Thanks, Mike. Ken Carpenter, the Iron County Sheriff. You know, first let me address something back, that's come up several times. Back in, I believe it was March of 2022, we believed that we wouldn't need to, to have a, a bond election, that the county would be able to finance this new facility without having to, to have any type of tax increase. And part of that was based upon the extra money that the county was collecting at the time. Part of it had to do with what's called CIB fundings, which is a Community Infrastructure Board money. That's money that comes back from the federal government to the state from mining interests. So drilling for oil, drilling for gas, other mining operations. And that, that money comes back to the state. The state then gives grants and loans out to municipalities for especially public safety, building firehouses, building jails, different things of that nature. So in, in March of 2022, we thought that this was going to be available to us. After the Black Lives Matter riots that took place, Salt Lake City had a huge exodus of police officers where many of their officers retired or sought employment elsewhere because of the way Salt Lake City handled those riots. As a result, Salt Lake wasn't able to, to hire officers. Nobody wanted to go to work for them. And their answer was, was to increase wages for Salt Lake PD by 30%. When they raised wages by 30%, then West Valley, Park City, West Jordan, South Jordan, those other WASatch agencies said, we're not going to be left behind here. And they also raised their wages by 30% or more. That caused rural agencies such as ours terrific hardship. I ended up losing 22 deputies in a 10-month period of time. I went to the commission and says, we have to do something to address this. We're, we're just bleeding out. The commission listened. They provided our deputies with a 10% pay increase and that stopped the bleeding. We're still not making anywhere near what Highway Patrol or, or any of these WASatch communities are making, but it stopped the bleeding and, and now we're back at full strength. But the problem is, is, is that that, along with wage increases to other county employees, used up that excess money that was available in the county. Because of the Biden administration's policies on mining and fuel extraction, things of that nature, all the money for CIB has dried up. We no longer have the availability of, of CIB funds to go and ask for, for grants or anything of that nature. So as a result, it put us back really kind of to square one as to how are we going to, to build and finance this facility that we're in desperate need of? The fact of the matter is, is our current jail is completely full. We have no more space. So currently what we're having to do is work with the courts to release lower level criminal offenses and put them back out on the street in order to have room for more serious offenders. And we don't like that. When, when that happens, what we're basically saying is this level of crime is now acceptable on our streets. We sincerely believe that if, if someone is convicted of a crime and is sentenced to jail, then we should have a bed space for that person to, to fulfill their entire sentence. And with our current facility, we don't have that available to us any longer. One of the, so, so as we've been looking at this, one of the things that we've been looking at is what's going to be sufficient for our needs, but how can we help remove the burden off of the back of the taxpayer? And the answer is through contract inmates. This is something that is commonly done throughout the state with other sheriff's offices and in fact, has been done here in Iron County since the inception of our current facility. We've always had federal or state inmates where the federal government or the state pays us to house those, those inmates for the federal and the state governments. And by building, instead of one pod facility, by building a two pod facility, we would be able to maximize the opportunity of bringing federal and state inmates in, in contract with the, the state and federal government and pay off that bond much more rapidly than the 30-year timeframe. So that's one of the things that we want to do and, and we want to do it for two reasons. One is that if we build a single pod facility, that would be enough for our immediate needs. But the problem is, is we wouldn't have the ability of, of bringing any contract inmates in, in, in a number that would be meaningful in order to, to help pay off that bond. The second part is, is that first pod will be filled, full within 10, a 10-year period of time, we estimate. By building a second pod now, it would only be in addition of $20 million to the project, which is what is, is priced at currently at the, the $84 million price rate. And it gives us, so it gives us the ability for future growth, but it also gives us the ability, like I said before, to maximize our contracting ability to state and federal governments to, to help pay off that bond and help remove the burden from the taxpayer. So even though it wouldn't lower that $154 that Mike was talking about, what it would do is it would help lower from a 30-year bond to 20, 15 or 10-year, depending on how long it takes us to, to pay that off. But it would help us be able to reduce the, the length of the bond upfront. A lot of people say that they don't think that it's, that it's ethical for us to, to bring these inmates in and they're, they're concerned about our, our communities. So let me address that for a minute. First, on our federal inmates, our federal inmates, we typically have for 60 to 90 days. And the reason is, is they're inmates that have been convicted of a crime, but they haven't been sentenced yet. And so we're a temporary layover for them until they're sentenced. And once they're sentenced, then they're sent to the federal penitentiary where they're going to spend the remainder of their sentence. So that, that's a really easy one for us. We don't have, their family members don't move here. This isn't going to be where they're incarcerated for long-term. They're never released back onto our streets. The second one is the state inmates. And with the state inmates, they come typically because of programming that is offered. So our jail offers certain things. We have a culinary program where they work in our kitchen and save the taxpayer millions of dollars every year on food preparation and food service. The other part that we have is a GED program. And currently we're looking at a, a new program called Ignite, which gives other educational opportunities to inmates and helps to give them a career path so that we can reduce recidivism instead of just putting them back out on the streets with no skills, no education. So we're, we're seriously looking at that at this point in time as well. But with state inmates, when state inmates come down for that programming, again, they're never released back onto Cedar City streets. They have to go back to the prison where they came from, whether it's Gunnison or the new prison in Salt Lake, to be released. If we ever have a problem with an inmate while in our custody, we can turn them back over to the state, no questions asked. We don't have to keep people that are, are being problems. The other part is, is we don't have to worry about their families moving here because we don't allow in-person visitation. All visitation in our jail is done by tablet. So there's people that say, well, I've, I've visited inmates in your jail in the past. That's true, but that's been several years ago, 10, 15 years ago. Ever since COVID, all visitation is done by tablet and that's how it will remain from here on out. That's one of the, the great benefits of technology. And as a result, we don't have family members that are moving down here following their inmate and bringing their problems or their baggage with them. So I just want to assure everyone that that's, that's not an issue in our, our current facility or in the future facility.
Ken, what's the, you know, we've talked a lot about this during the course of, of all of our, of all of the planning and everything else. What's the, I guess, what's the, what's the benefit of additional programming space?
Again, one of those, one of the things with programming is, is, is the more programs that we can offer, the more interest we have from state inmates to, to come take a, a part of that. And we can also use that programming for our own county inmates. So let me give you an example with this Ignite program. My jail lieutenant and one of first sergeants and I went back to Genesee County, Michigan, where the sheriff there started a program that he calls Ignite. And basically what he said was that his philosophy is, is that, that if you're in his jail, then you're going to be a student. You're going to be learning life skills and things that are going to, to help you be able to go out and become a contributing part of society instead of a repeat offender. And so when he first started this program, he has what's called direct supervision in his jail, which means that his, his guards are on the floor with the inmates all the time. The first year before he started this program, he had 364 assaults in his jail on other prisoners or on his guards directly. After he started this program, they dropped by 97%. They dropped from 364 assaults to seven assaults in a year. And, and part of that was because these inmates are now engaged in learning. They're now engaged in, in constructive ways of being able to become better people and have better opportunities for the future. Some of the things that, that they're doing in Genesee County right now is a food handlers program that allows inmates to, to come out with a, a certification that would allow them to run a restaurant or a hotel restaurant. He's got a welding program and an electrician's program that's all done through virtual reality. He's got GED and, and high school programs. And those are all things that, that we're looking at and working towards with our Southwest Tech. I've been in contact with Southwest Tech. And then we're looking at some virtual reality things with welding program, with the robotics program. We're looking at, we've already got a GED, GED program and a high school diploma program in our jail currently. And there's, there's a lot of other things. Culinary, like I say, we already have a culinary program in our facility. So we have a lot of opportunity of being able to expand the breadth of what we offer and to be able to give these inmates an opportunity of learning and developing life skills and receive certifications. They can give them some hope of being able to get a job when they leave jail and be able to have a more productive life and be able to be a part of our, of our society in a, in a contributing manner rather than, than just taking. I think that that's really important for the future of Iron County.
We're already paying taxes on these federal inmates through our federal tax dollars and our state inmates. What's the, is there any benefit to, to bring those tax dollars back to Iron County?
Absolutely. You know, and, and that's a conversation I had with the gentleman the other night that was philosophically opposed to having contract inmates here in Iron County. And I asked him this question. I asked him if he would agree with me that the state and federal government are already taking taxes out of his check to house state and federal inmates wherever they are across the nation. And he said that he, he did agree with that. So then I asked him, why would it be immoral for us to bring some of those tax dollars back to be spent in our community that our taxpayers are putting out there to, to house these inmates in, in other parts of the country? And he, he couldn't answer that question. And I, I think that that's something that's important for us to understand is we're already paying state and federal tax to house inmates that are in prison, either at the state or the federal level. And both the state and federal government are dependent upon sheriff's offices and sheriff's jails to provide additional housing so that they don't have to keep building more and more expensive and costly penitentiaries. But this is, it's a win-win situation for us as well because as the sheriff, I'm dictated by law and by constitution to provide a jail for my county so that all other law enforcement agencies within our county have a, a place to bring people that are rested upon probable cause. That's something that I can't, I can't ignore. It's, it's something that's required by the constitution, by state law. And as I, as we've said before, we're at the point where we're just out of, out of room. We have to, to grow our jail facility along with the growth of our county. We have to be able to keep up with that growth. So by contracting, again, by contracting out to the federal and state government on some of these beds that we don't have an immediate use for, we're now able to help the taxpayer pay the bond and get it paid down quicker and more efficiently without having to, to put that entire burden on the back of the taxpayer. So I think that that's, that's a, a huge win for our county to be able to do that. Once it's all paid off, if that, if we still don't have a need for those additional bed spaces and we continue to contract with the state and federal government, then that money goes into the, the county's general fund and can be used for other things, improving roads, increased wages for employees, whatever it is that the commissioners choose to use it for at that time. But again, that's something that is helping to defer future tax increases to the taxpayer. And so for the taxpayer, it's a win-win situation and it brings those dollars right back here into Iron County to be able to be spent here in Iron County rather than in, you know, Emery County or, or some other state. I think that that's, that's a huge benefit for, for Iron County as a whole. One of the other things that I think is, is beneficial is we talk about, you know, the poverty level in Iron County. And, and this new jail facility is going to, to bring opportunity to our own subcontractors. We've been working with Leighton Construction and Babcock Design for about a year and a half now. And Leighton Construction is starting to look at being able to bid out some different parts of the project to subcontractors. They've already received bids for concrete work from two of our local companies. That's money that's going to, to be brought into local companies and be, will be spent locally within, within our, within our communities and is going to help bolster our communities. You know, and there's other things, electrical work or plumbing work, different things like that that can be subcontracted out and keep our tax dollars here in our community to help stimulate our, our community. And I think that those things are all important. And then ultimately, as, as the size of the jail grows in proportion with the inmates that we bring in, and again, that's something that will, the inmate growth or the contract will be able to help support and, and take care of, gives increased job opportunities for people that live here in Iron County. You know, there's so many of these things that I think that are a win-win situation for our community.
So our jail, the Iron County Jail now, is the oldest jail in the state. Is the oldest continual use facility. In fact, I remember when I was about a, a senior in high school is when they built the current jail. Now, that's only been five years-ish since I graduated high school. I wish, but probably a little more than that. That was back in about 1987 when they built the new jail. Well, the, the current jail, the new jail back then. But that's been over, that's been over 30 years ago. What kind of wear and tear or like what are, what are some of the maintenance? I guess some of the maintenance frustrations or challenges that we deal with now?
That's a great question. So our, our jail currently, as Mike said, is 37 years old. And it, it was really, quite frankly, it was designed poorly. So our bed, our jail is currently a 254-bed facility. But because of separation requirements that were mandated to put in place, for example, between males and females, between, you know, homicide suspects and theft suspects, there's a classification system which requires different categories of criminals to be separated from one another in order to keep everyone safe. And because of that classification requirement, you know, we can only effectively use about 180 of our, of our current beds. One of the things that you need to also keep in mind is just the, the changing face of, of our community. When our current facility was built, it was built for four female inmates. And currently we house on a regular basis between 24 and 40 female inmates on an average.
Do they, do they, do those 24 to 40 female inmates, do they each have their own private bathroom? Or how many, how many bathrooms do they, how many showers do they have in that cell block?
There's really only one shower for all 24 to 40 female inmates. And, you know, and, and this is a problem is that we have literally used every additional space that we had. So we had storage closets that have been turned into housing areas. We had a gymnasium that's been turned into, into a housing unit. And we have no place else left to go. We've used every bit of space that's available to us for housing areas. And giving an example of one of the problems that we're running into currently is I have four cells in my booking area that that handle both the booking of incoming inmates before they're put into general population and also for medical cells when we have somebody that has to be segregated for whatever reason. And one of the, the problems that we have is that's where we keep people that are on suicide watch. If somebody is suicidal that's in the jail, we keep them in those booking cells so that we can keep them under direct observation at all times. Well, I've only got four of those cells. This last weekend, we had eight people that were on suicide watch. So where do I put those? How do, how do we keep an adequate eye on those people that are, are at risk of trying to take their own life? And, you know, that, that has a reflection on some of the, the mental health issues that we have going on within our community. But those are just some of the things that we're, we're working with. So from an overcrowding standpoint, we're there. We have no more space. But from a jail maintenance standpoint, our facility is a dinosaur. And I'll give you some examples. Our air handler, our air handling units on the roof are all rusted out. So every time that it rains hard, it literally leaks through the roof into our jail facility. The, the, when they designed the jail, they put one drain in the courtyards for the exercise yards. And they have all the water that comes off the roof go into those, into those exercise yards. That one drain can't handle a heavy rainstorm. It can't keep up with it. So the last heavy rainstorm we had, we literally had three feet of water out in our courtyard that was coming underneath our doors, going through our hallways, underneath the booking doors into the booking area. You know, when our, our basement is essentially on the same level as the sewer out in Main Street. And when the sewer becomes overwhelmed by a heavy rainstorm, the water backs up from the sewer into our basement. Our heating and ventilation and air conditioning system is so old that currently my maintenance folks have to buy parts off of eBay because they don't make the, that, that system anymore. Our sewer pipes are, are cast iron sewer pipes and are beginning to rust out. So we're, we're having problems with, with sewer leak gendered the jail. You know, there's just a, a whole host of, of maintenance nightmares that are taking place, things that we just can't, can't work around. You have to keep in mind that remodeling a jail isn't the same as remodeling a house or a commercial building. You know, a jail has two foot thick concrete floors reinforced by rebar that has all the conduit and all the sewer piping running underneath of it. The walls are all eight to 10 inches thick reinforced with rebar. And so it's not a simple thing to be able to go in and remodel a jail facility or, or replace some of these systems. We've, we've looked very diligently at that. And we found that the cost to, to try to stay on site where we're at would cost us about 15 to 25% more than just building a new facility. And, you know, we're, we just don't really have the room to go anyplace. There's a, a conditional use permit that the city has on the current facility that doesn't allow us to go outside of our current footprint. So we really don't have any options. We need to seriously look at, at building a new facility.
So, God, there's so many issues. So we're, we're out of room. There's sewage coming up through the, sewage coming up through the floor every time we get a big rainstorm. We're purchasing parts to, to just keep the place together on eBay because we don't have, because they're, they're just not available anymore. So these don't sound like problems that are going to go away or the, that are going to mend themselves or anything else. So what, so what happens if we don't? I mean, really, I guess our backs up against the wall and, and, I mean, I know in our conversations, I mean, we, nobody, this, this project isn't popular with any of us. I mean, this is, this is something that me, me as a commissioner, I never thought that this is something that I would have to do. That, you know, that I would have to look at, at a tax increase or a general bond. Those are just something that I, I never thought that I was going to have to do. But, so what happens if the bond doesn't pass? Just say that we don't get the support for this bond. Where does that leave us moving forward?
That's a great question. And, and really that, that puts more and more civil liability upon our current facility. And it puts greater risk of safety to our community. It's like I say, you know, any, just in order to manage our current jail population right now, we're currently working with the courts to release lower level offenders back out on the street before their term is up in order to be able to ensure that we have room for more violent, more serious offenses that we're going to arrest tomorrow or next week or whenever. And anytime that we do that, basically what we're saying is, is that we're going to accept this higher level of crime to be in our neighborhoods and to be on our streets because, because we don't have room to house them in our current facility. And I, I think that that's, that's a terrible message to send. We need to make sure that if someone is convicted of a, of a criminal offense and is sentenced for jail time, that we have a bed space available for them to keep them for the entire time that they've been commanded to be incarcerated by the judicial system. So I, I think that that's, that's one part of it. You know, the other part of it is, is that if we keep, you know, having to, to stay where we're at, then eventually we're going to end up putting inmates on the floor. And when we start putting inmates on the floor, then we start worrying about civil litigation and civil rights violations and, and different things like that, you know. And, I mean, I've, I've heard a lot of people talk about Sheriff Joe Arpaio down in, in Maricopa County and his tent cities and his pink underwear. And, you know, I, I have a pair of Joe's pink underwear that he signed for me. And, you know, I've always been a big fan of Joe. But the fact of the matter is, is they paid way more money in civil litigation and civil lawsuits than what it would ever cost us to build a new jail facility. And that's, that's the path where we're heading is we're heading down a path where if we do nothing, that's a decision. And that decision is, is that we're going to accept civil litigation. We're going to accept higher levels of crime being released back out onto our streets to revictimize our, our general population. Those things are not good for Cedar City or for Iron County in any regard. Those are things that we are diligently trying to fight against. So if the bond election fails this year, we're going to be back next year. But next year, the cost increase is going to go up. You know, the, right now, the, the current estimate is, is that the cost will go up six to $10 million. So instead of being an $84 million project, it's going to be a 90 to, to $95 million project. You know, when one looks at, at investments in real estate, they're always going up. There may be little fluctuations where the market drops for, for just a minute and then it goes back up. But when you look at, at those two things, the, the, it's always an upward increase. And, and we've seen that time and time again. And, you know, to, if we'd been able to build this jail four years ago, we would have saved $20 million and had it at a 2% interest rate. But we weren't able to do that. And now it's $20 million more in a, a 4.6% interest rate. So, you know, one of the things that, that the taxpayer has to understand, the community has to understand is this isn't going to go away. This is a need that the county has. It's something that we have to do. And it's, if it gets defeated this year, it's going to be back next year. If it gets defeated next year, it's going to be back the year after that. It's not going to go away. But the cost is going to continue to go up and the liability to the county is going to continue to go up. So, you know, it's, Dan Jess and our former county auditor told me one time, he says, when's the best time to plant a tree? 20 years ago. But if we didn't plant it 20 years ago, when's the best time to plant a tree today? And that's where we're at. We weren't able to plant the tree four years ago. So we need to plant it today. Ultimately, it's going to, to be the best thing for the community. Ultimately, it's going to save the county money. And ultimately, it's going to be what helps us help keep you safe. So this is something that we really need.